Good evening, members of the public. Mr. Goodall, Dr. Alvik, and members of the Board of Education. The Monroe Township Board of Education Organization meeting is now called to order. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted December 28, 2018 at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. This is a unique Board of Education meeting where it begins without a board president as chair, and as board secretary it is my role to chair the meeting until such time as a successful nomination process for president is concluded. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number four on the agenda is the election results. The results have been distributed to all the board members and copies are available on the front desk for members of the public. The election results have been confirmed and certified by the County Clerk of Elections. It is now my duty to administer the oath of office to the following individuals who are hereby requested to join me at the table up front. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paul Rutzke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States
and this state
And this state
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
so help me God.
So help me God.
I
I, Paul Rutzke.
do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
for the office of member of a Board of Education
For the office of a member of a Board of Education
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially
and justly
And justly
perform all the duties of that office
Perform all the duties of that office
according to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities
so help me God.
So help me God.
I
I, Paul Rutzke.
do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
and declare that I am not disqualified
And declare that I am not disqualified
as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
As a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
and that I am not disqualified to hold this office
And I am not disqualified to hold this office
due to a conviction of a crime
Due to a conviction of a crime
or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1
Or a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1
so help me God.
So help me God.
We're done. Please sign. All right. We will now proceed with the roll call. Mrs. Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Chierola.
Here.
Mrs. DeMayo.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Pallori.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mrs. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
And Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
Let it be noted that we have a quorum present to do business this evening. I would like to turn over the floor to Acting Superintendent Mr. Goodall.
Good evening, everyone. This is very difficult to do, but on the behalf of the entire school district, I would like to extend our deepest condolences to the Kukar family on the sudden loss of their son and brother Nicholas over winter break. Nicholas was a fourth grade student at Brookside Elementary School. Admittedly, it was a very somber day at the school for the returning students and teachers. I would like to thank Mr. Pepe, Ms. Fedora, Ms. Levinson, Nicholas's teacher, and all of the counselors and staff who made themselves available to the family and friends to offer comfort and support of the Kukar family. We have a great community that shines even brighter in the worst of times. I would ask at this time, everyone in the room, to please join me and stand up if you
We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, election of the board president. I will formally open the nomination process at this time. Would anybody like to make a motion nominating anyone for board president?
Mr. Gorski.
Mrs. Lang.
I would like to nominate Kathy Koloponowicz as Board of Education President. I feel strongly that with her 20-plus years of service and the dedication she has shown this school district, she has the skills that we need to lead us at this time. I also believe that she has held our board together through some really tough times, and I would strongly support Mrs. Koloponowicz. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for president? Mr. Chierola.
Yes, I would like to nominate Patty Lang. I think that this board needs to heal. I think that what I'd like to see is a rotating presidency, and that's something we could talk about at another time, but I made a motion years ago, and it fell on deaf ears, but I think that that would be a proper way to go, and I'd like to see that start off with someone like Ms. Lang, who has been there at all of our fights for fair funding, spearheaded the fight in this town against Park, and she's done a -- she goes to every school board's event and actually helps keep me informed, and she keeps the entire board informed. I think that as part of the healing process and bringing the board together, I'd like to see someone like Ms. Lang leading our board and making the changes that I think we need that'll really help bring us all together.
Would anybody else like to make a nomination for president? Mrs. Arminio.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Ryback. He's been our vice president for a while. He was also held president for one term, and I think he's been also a very enthusiastic supporter of the board, so I'm nominating him as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Gorski.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I respectfully decline the nomination? My health, I'm still working on healing from the strokes. I don't truly, in my opinion, believe that I am -- though I can't tell you how much what you've said meant to me and how moved I am by your words, but I think it would be remiss of myself to keep my name out there when I really am still healing from the effects of the stroke, and I would -- I just don't think I'm ready for that level of responsibility. But I thank you very much. I really sincerely thank you.
Let it be noted that Mrs. Lang has declined the nomination.
Mr. Gorski.
Yes, sir.
Equally, I certainly appreciate so many of your support, but I also have to respectfully decline the nomination. I'm also having a bit of a problem with asthma, and I just -- it really gets to me sometimes, and I really feel if I'm going to do that, I want to be 100 percent.
Thank you. Let it be noted that Mr. Ryback has also declined the nomination. That leaves Mrs. Koloponowicz. Seeing no more nominations, I will formally close the nomination process, and we will have a roll call vote. Nominee number one is Kathy Koloponowicz. A yes vote for Kathy Koloponowicz would designate your support for her being president of the Board of Education. Mrs. Arminio.
No.
Mr. Chierola.
No.
Mrs. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Pallori.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
No.
And Mr. Rutzke. This is a majority of the nominees who prevails, as we only have one with seven yays. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Kathy Koloponowicz in her election as board president.[812.12][812.12](applause)
Mr. Gorski, can I ask you a procedural question?
Yes, sir.
Since we already have one nomination, what's the point in taking the vote? Isn't that unanimous?
It's a majority vote, as I said, and it's just for the record. It'll be noted in the minutes, the yays and the nays. Thank you. And I now turn over the chair position to Kathy Koloponowicz.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Thank you, Patty, for those very kind words and for the Board of Education for supporting me for another year as board president. For those who did not support me, I respect your decision, as we always -- as I always do, respect the decisions of others. Before we move on to the election of vice president, I'd like to talk a little bit about last year. Last year was a very difficult time, not just for the Board of Education, but for the community, for members of the board, for administrators, and for me. I was criticized for everything that happened on the board. When half the board walked out twice and left without a quorum, that was my fault. For not being transparent with personnel issues when we were not allowed to discuss them, that's my fault. For the referendum failing, my fault. For taking too long to settle the MTEA agreement, my fault. For initiating a hate packet on a member of the public, for my leadership ability or a lack thereof. I've been criticized for my friendships throughout the community, for sharing my personal season tickets for sports events, for having a home in Florida. I even heard that it's my fault of all the building that's going on around Monroe is due to me. I also had a letter read in public that somebody found on a chair and felt the need to read in public session, and there was nothing in that letter that was true or accurate. There was also 2,500 pages of my emails opened, and nothing was found in them that would suggest I did anything unethical, immoral, illegal, or anything to hurt the Board of Education and especially our students. Last August, I had an ethics violation filed against me by Mr. Prezioso, and I had five ethics violations filed against me by Mrs. Skirby, and I was not able to defend myself publicly while these charges were going through the New Jersey State School Ethics Commission for the past four and a half years -- excuse me, four and a half months. I was just informed by my attorney last Thursday that in a seven-page filing from the School Ethics Commission, Mr. Prezioso's charge has been dismissed in its entirety. In the case of Mrs. Skirby, in a 15-page filing, all five ethics charges against me have been dismissed in its entirety. I equate --[1021.70][1021.70](applause) I equate these charges against me to people in the community writing letters of concern to the board members, which others seem to call a hate packet. Everybody is entitled to their opinion. We value those opinions, and we -- if somebody files an ethics charge, we work on that. If somebody has something to say to the Board of Education, it will always be heard. What the public doesn't realize is that there is a cost to the taxpayers for defending against ethics charges or any legal case. I have to find an attorney, but attorney is paid for by the Board of Education, which is in turn paid for by the taxpayers. At $350 an hour or higher, it all adds up when you are defending yourself against six ethics charges. And while I believe in the Oprah process, we had thousands upon thousands of emails opened last year that takes away from the everyday responsibilities of our administrators. I've been a board member for many years, and I just didn't decide last year that I was going to be an unethical board member. Always have followed the rules, always the bylaws, and always been an ethical board member. Sometimes it's not what you hear, sometimes you don't like what you're hearing, but it doesn't mean that it's been wrong. I am one member of a 10-member board. I don't make the decisions. They go through the committee process and then through the full Board of Education for approval. That's the way it's always been done. That's the way it will continue to be done. It is now a new year and time for a fresh start. I look forward to working with the whole board, the whole school district, and our community to give all of our students the best education possible. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the position of vice president.
Madam President, it's my pleasure and honor to nominate Steve Ryback as the vice president for the Board of Education. I have observed Steve for the last six years or so, especially over the past couple of years. He's a man of integrity, a man who is visionary, and I think he's served the board well in the past few years, and I would like to see him continuing that role, supporting all of us.
Is there a second to that nomination?
You don't need -- madam, procedurally, we don't need a second nomination, I believe.
I know we don't. We always used to ask for them, so I'm asking if there is a second to that nomination.
If you want to follow the bylaws, it says they're not necessary.
Mrs. Arminio, I'm asking if there is a second to the nomination.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion is passed, and at this time, we will have a roll call for the position of vice president for Mr. Steve Ryback.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Chierola.
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Pallori.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Mr. Rutzke.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback, congratulations on your unanimous point of pass
Thank you.
board vice president.[1238.73][1238.73](applause)
Congratulations, Mr. Ryback. I look forward to working with you this year, as well as we worked together last year.
Same. Thank you.
And if you have anything you'd like to say, please.
Well, I do, if you don't mind. I won't take too long, just maybe a half hour.
Okay.[1259.42][1259.42](laughing) You deserve it.
I certainly want to thank all my colleagues on the board for their support, as well as the applause I heard from the audience, and hopefully I won't disappoint. I do take this seriously, and I'm there for the kids, I'm there for the community, and we have something that we have to work very -- all of us, the community and the board have to work very hard for, and that's a referendum. We need schools for our students. We need a high school expansion, and we need a new middle school. Eventually, we need more than that. We need to join hands, and that's what our focus has to be on. We have to really support each other and hopefully the decisions of the board. I look forward to a real positive experience here, and I know we're working hard to get all the facts out, because all the facts probably don't get to all the people all the time, and we're doing the best we can to overcome that. The other small thing I want to mention is that you know that I have personally been in favor of impact fees for developers. We hear of suffering because, not only here, but I imagine other towns as well in New Jersey, because impact fees for developers are illegal in the state. And what they are -- excuse me -- is when a developer comes in, they have -- they create an impact on the community, whether it be the schools, police, roads, infrastructure. So they have to contribute to offset the burden that their development is causing in the community. I'm very happy to have learned that our town is going to consider a resolution to be in favor of impact fees for developers. Granted, I also realize that a lot of the development is already here, but it's a step in the right direction. I don't know of any other towns that are doing this, so I credit our town for this, and hopefully at the next town council meeting, that will pass. It's long overdue, and we have to get Trenton on board with this. We all have to work together for this, and I'm just very grateful to see this first step. Thank you. And thank you again for your support.[1399.01][1399.01](applause)
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gorski for the Code of Ethics.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Education have received the Code of Ethics, so at this time, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education acknowledge, receive, and acceptance of the New Jersey School Board Association Code of Ethics. Can I have a first?
First.
Mr. Chierola, second.
Second.
We'll have a roll call on the acceptance of the Code of Ethics by the members of the Board of Education. Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
Yes.
Mr. Chierola.
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallori.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
And a board president, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, and everybody needs to sign the last page of the Code of Ethics and hand it to Mr. Gorski by the end of the evening. Okay, so at this time, we'll go to the suspension of a policy. It is recommended that the Board of Education suspend the operation of Policy Bylaw Number 0164 to permit the board to conduct only one public forum at this evening's public meeting. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Mrs. Lang.
Second.
Second, Mr. Mayo. Any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Tofano.
What is the purpose of restricting that?
Because we don't have a normal agenda. We don't have a superintendent's report. We don't have committee reports. We don't have -- so you're not speaking to the agenda this evening.
Right.
You're just speaking to -- I mean, anybody can come up and speak to whatever they want.
Okay.
So we would normally have it and then close it, and then I'd have another one right after it, so we're just having one.
All right.
Okay, do we take a roll call on this? We'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Siegel.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
Yes.
Mr. Chierola.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Pallori.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
And a board president, suspension of the bylaw has passed.
Okay, then we will go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to come up and speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. We will adhere to our four-minute time limit, and when our new clock goes off, your time is up.
Good evening. My name is Christine Patterson, 4B Edinburgh Drive. I'm here on behalf of the League Women Voters to invite the board to attend on January 29th. The League will be sponsoring a program on human trafficking, myths and misconceptions. We have flyers on the table for everyone. This will be a panel discussion. We have really quite an impressive panel, including a victim specialist from the Newark Division of the FBI, professor of psychology at Rutgers, Assemblyman Dancer, who is a co-sponsor of a Human Trafficking and Child Exploitation Prevention Act, Senator Thomas Keen, who sponsored legislation around human trafficking, Sergeant Dela Cruz from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, SVU, and personally, the most impressive to me is a young lady who was a sophomore at Monroe Township High School named Venisha Patel, who is a credit to this school district, to our parents, and to this community, very impressive young woman, who is a participant in a regional Model UN conference and has done considerable research and work in this area. She's really, really quite something. The program will be in the library at 6:30 PM. We will show a short film, followed by the panel discussion. We will distribute information on how to protect our kids from this really, really serious problem, which is in fact a problem in New Jersey, and the primary targets are middle school-aged children and high school age. But they're really targeting middle school age kids. So we will be putting out information about materials that are available to protect your children, various kinds of protective software you can put on their cell phones, and all that sort of thing. So, you know, I hope that you'll support us in this endeavor. It's -- a lot of work has gone into putting this panel discussion together. We're hoping for a really good event, and as I said, there are some flyers on the table. Thank you, Mrs. Lang, for printing them up for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the invitation to attend this very important meeting.[1718.26][1718.26](applause) Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hi, Hemant Patel, 15 Alderado Way. About the agenda setup system, what we have from many years, I would like to request and have one suggestion to entire board and acting superintendent to add immediately after the superintendent's report, the security director's few minutes of addressing the meeting. It is important that parents attending this meeting should know security perspective or current situation, if any, not dangerous or nothing, not a big deal, but which includes the drug abuse or any problem. But we, as a parent, want to hear directly from the superintendent, director of the security, and we would like to see that that agenda item is added in every meeting. And regardless, if there is no incident, also, we can say thank you to him, but we want to see that we add it immediately after the superintendent's report. So parents will have a firsthand information. Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll take that under consideration. I think we have to talk to the board attorney about adding that kind of information.
Sure. Sure. See, requesting is to get firsthand information, because the entire Board can have our opinion. But we are not here to take the opinion. We are here to know the first fact, what happened, not happened, or what is his perspective, and anything happened in the 50 states. They are the one having the right resource and right information.
Right.
And they are trained and qualified for that. That's why.
Okay.
So, I suggest to have him, because we have a qualified guy on the payroll. That's why.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Chrissy Scurby, 21 Preakness Drive. I want to say that I hope this year coming forward, as Mr. Chirrell has said, I think this Board will come together and heal and do what's right for our district. We did see a very bad, horrible year last year, and as you did say, Ms. Koloponowicz, yes, I did file ethics charges because of things that I uncovered through Dr. Kozak and things that went on last year. And I don't think any member of the public should be intimidated when they feel that their children or themselves have been wronged by this district, or retaliated against, to take their concerns. I took those concerns to the Board. I never got a response, so I did move forward. And I don't think anybody should be intimidated and feel that they should not try to get resolution for issues that they see. Moving forward this year, I have met with Mr. Goodall on behalf of the Monroe Township Middle School Parents' Staff Association. We are welcoming the administration, as well as the teachers' union, to our January 16th meeting for support of the referendum. We are looking forward to helping this district with the referendum efforts, and I truly hope that this Board can come together, because we cannot have another year that we had last year. Our children deserve a lot better than what we had. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay.
Sajiv Ravindran, H.R. John and Co. I want to first congratulate the new members of the Board, and also wish everyone a Happy New Year. I wanted to share, some of us parents were, have, have been conducting a survey about the referendum and what the public's opinion is in terms of the support of the schools. And I just, I'll distribute some of the, I have a slide that I'll distribute over here. But I just want to share some of the feedback that we've got so far. Overwhelming majority of the public, 60%, north of 60%, actually support both schools, the middle school and the high school. And between, amongst the residents who do not have any kids going to the school, which is a large, you know, a lot of our senior population, there's about 60% of the people who do not support either school. So, my opinion, and this is the opinion of some of us parents, that if you word the question as middle school or high school, I think you have a really good chance of dividing the votes between the parents who favor the middle school versus the parents who favor the high school, and there's a good chance that the referendum can fail again. So, our recommendation to the Board is strongly considering the wording to be middle school and high school, yes or no, which gives us a greater chance of this referendum passing. And we'll be happy to share all the data that we have collected and some of their details. We'll keep the survey running for another week, maybe two weeks. We've got about 750 residents who've responded so far, which I think is a good sample. We've tried to reach out to as many people as we can, or social media and other news sites. We'll keep it open for another two weeks, but that's our strong recommendation. This is based on data. It's not based on feelings or things that we've spoke with other residents. So, one other point that I want to touch on is, and this is not to distract from the referendum, but we saw strong support for an intermediate school, which is a fifth and sixth-grade school. I think that solves a lot of problems. I would strongly recommend looking at that as an alternate option. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond, Mr. Goodall?
Sir, thank you for your comments and feedback, and parents have shared that survey with me. Just note that a lot of planning went into the referendum as it's being proposed now, and we're hoping that the presentations that we have lined up within the community, some private presentations with organizations, and also with our senior citizen communities, that we will be extremely transparent and demonstrate why the questions are going to be proposed as they will be, and the necessity to have the two-middle-school, one-high-school model. And, you know, the presentations will begin shortly, and we feel we will address all of the concerns from our residents about our plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we are happy to help, partner with you, and provide any kind of help that you need.
And I wanted to respond to you, because we sent out information, some general information before the holidays, and sometimes that doesn't spell out the whole big picture, but we're more than willing to do that and listen to questions and concerns, but we think we have very solid information and a great plan in place for this district.
And could you share some of those details? I mean, in terms of...
We're going to do that during our presentations.
Pretty good. Do you mind if I share this, the data that I have with you all today?
If you'd like to share, yes. I'll be glad to take the data.
Sure.
And then we'll share it with the administration.
Okay, so I'll put some summary together as a slide.
Okay. You can give it to me, and I will, I will have the Board Secretary take it. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Ramraghna, 6 Owens Drive, Monroe. Again, congratulations to all the new members, the President and the Vice President. So, really looking forward to this BOE, really coming together, putting some points on the Board, and really working, importantly, working with the public, right, and make sure that we can, in partnership, really address some critical issues that are facing. 2019 is going to be a critical year for us. So, we will, we are ready to partner with you as you move forward, but we'll also be watching you as you take actions and make decisions. One thing, I was a little disturbed seeing how the president election went, to see that was, there was only one valid nomination. It doesn't give me a good feeling. You know, this is not how, it has to be vibrant. There need to be more nominations. I just, I feel there's some kind of a group thing going on. Let's hope I'm wrong. Let's hope this group thing doesn't come into decisions, and really encourage everyone to partner with the public. So, a couple of points. Again, congratulate, or thanks, Sajiv, really great job done with this survey, partnering with few of us. 750 or 736, to be exact, folks responded to that. But an important fact that, feedback that came out is 62% of those respondents are asking for both the middle school and a high school, as a single question to be included, 62%. Only 2.7% support a middle-school-only thing being put on the table. So, again, Sajiv has shared that information. We're looking to work with who is necessary to do that. One of the things I know, Ms. Arminio, had requested at the last meeting, right, to see if one of the BOE meetings or a special meeting could be had where all the members are present, and it could be focused on discussing openly on the referendum. I didn't hear anything on that. Madam President, is that going to be happening or not?
I think it's something that I'll discuss with the administrations, because we do have an awful lot of opportunities for the Board to come to many presentations and listen. If we feel that we need to have a Board presentation, that we will do that.
Okay. Again, from a public, we would really like that to happen. Again, from what Princeton Township did, which I spoke at the last meeting, they did N number of town halls, right? And importantly, the town halls, but they were not one-way, right? They got the feedback from the public, and even a few weeks before the referendum, modified the language. And that's what was put on December 11th, right? So, Mr. Goodall, I heard your words. Really appreciate. I know you have been very proactive, working with the members of the community to get their feedback. I think what we're trying to say is, you know, please try to get our feedback, you know? It's not about selling the referendum, right? It's making sure the right referendum and the right language goes, and all of us want this to succeed. We feel we need a middle school, we need a high school, and we need it now, right? And that's what we want to make sure, that this succeed, this does not fail, because it would be really detrimental for all our kids.
Okay, our calendar is filling up with a lot of dates for presentations. We will put that on the website, so if anyone has the opportunity to attend one or more, we'll feel free to come and do that, ask any of the questions that you have, and we will tailor our presentations based on the information we get at each presentation.
Thank you very much.
Karine Masters, 9 McKale Court. I have a curriculum question, so it's more for Dr. Alvik. Since the financial literacy law went into place, is that going to be covered, like, through the PBL math class at the middle school level, do you know, or...
The financial literacy at the middle school? We do it at the high school.
Well, the law was just signed, I think, this week, starting in September?
Then I haven't gotten the notification of it yet.
Oh, I have read the article today, so I was waiting.
Yeah. Currently, at the high school, students are required to take a half a year of personal finance before they, to graduate.
Right, no, that I know.
Yeah, the one for that, that one, I have not gotten the notice from the state yet.
Oh, well, it's going to start in September, so I'm giving you a heads up. Okay.
Thanks.
Vikasukla, 2 C.R.C. Co. I have a couple of things. One is, we have lost a lot of time in terms of the school referendum. I agree with everyone. That is very important that we make sure that we get a yes vote this time. We spent one and a half years researching land that had obvious issues to begin with, and then we spent another one year in pretty much reintroducing the same plan that we had last year in the referendum. I'm not sure what changed between last year and this year in terms of the middle school. It's the same land and the same plan. So, my request is, given that we have lost so much time, and with every day passing by, new houses are mushrooming up everywhere in Monroe, I really request that if you can expedite the middle school portion of it, and somehow go for a scheduled date of 2021 instead of 2022. And the second is, I think if we remove the confusion between the two schools, high school, do you want middle school, middle school or, and high school, or do you not want school? These are three options that we are talking about right now. I think it's very confusing. It really took me and a couple of friends, at least an hour of discussion, to figure out how this is going to really work. And, I mean, we do a lot of math at work, and still, it was quite confusing. And I think, you just keep it simple, right? You know, you want school, you don't want school, right? And, you know, who wants to go through this, one more of this in another year or so? So, let's take a chance with it. Let's go for it, and see if we can, you know, hopefully, we will still get a yes vote based on some of the data that we are looking at. A third thing, which is completely unrelated, is what can we, have we looked at introducing Math Olympiad in the elementary school level, and what has been, is that a possibility? If yes, what needs to be done to do that?
Dr. Alvik, do you have an answer to that, a Math Olympiad?
It's the first time I'm hearing about it, so this would be something that I would have to take back to the math supervisor and back to the elementary principals to see if we, if it was something we could do. We do, there are a couple of things that happen at the elementary school, a couple of different competitions. I'm not sure Math Olympiad is one of them, but we do do some, we do other competitions at the elementary level. But I'd have to take it back to the elementary level and the math supervisor.
Okay. Any thoughts on the other two points?
Mr. Gorski?
With regard to the vote, the bond referendum is going to be on December 12th, I'm sorry, March 12th, and the steering committee, after much deliberation, determined that based on the number of unhoused students in the middle school, the trailers that are already deployed at the middle school, which are cannibalizing the general fund budget, and the number of enrollment and projections at the middle school, that clearly is the district priority. I think it's unfair, in my opinion, to have a survey to the community without that information being present, so that the people submitting an answer can make an informed decision based on the facts, other than just the opinion that's granted, which sounds like this may have been, because I don't know if those circumstances were presented.
Well, with due respect, sir, last year, around same time, a lot of us came here and say that, you know, put the high school there, otherwise it's going to get defeated. Nobody listened to us, and that's exactly what happened.
Okay, thank you.
And with one, the final thing was the, can we abbreviate the time schedule? You're preaching to the choir, because we would love to. We would love to get the school open this September if we could, but because of the submission process to the Department of Education, the amount of testing and requirements that are involved, the bidding process to make sure that the taxpayers are paying the lowest possible prices for the construction of the school, all takes time, and we're on a very crunched timetable to open for September of '22.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we will close the public forum, and we will go to organization items. Mr. Gorski?
Madam President, may I have a couple of words? I probably stopped them being more than two minutes.
You can do that during other Board business.
Okay.
Madam, organization items. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the organization, all items A through D by consent roll call. They are as follows. A is the meeting date schedule. Be it resolved that the regular meetings of the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe shall be held as per the previously submitted schedule, at which time formal action may be taken. B, policy. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe that all policies of the previous Board are hereby adopted until such time as the Board decides to revise or otherwise alter the policies. C, designation of banks or depositories. Be it resolved that the Board of Education designates the following banks or depositories for school district funds. The Depository Trust Company, the State of New Jersey Cash Management Fund, Provident Bank, U.S. Bank. Provident Bank provides most of the banking services. Be it further resolved that the Business Administrator Board Secretary is authorized to establish accounts and wire transfer funds among the accounts as needed, and approve the payment of bills between Board meetings. Item D, newspapers for legal advertisements. Be it resolved that the Board of Education designates the Cranberry Press or the Home News Tribune, both of which circulate in the school district as the official newspapers for legal advertisement. Is there a first?
A motion, and a second?
Second.
Mr. Ryback?
Are you making the motion? And Mrs. Lang is seconding it. Okay, comments or questions? Ms. Arminio?
Could you just explain on C, the Depository Trust Company? I, and that might have been there last year, but I don't remember it, and is that a private bank, or...
Depository Trust Company has the New Jersey Cash Management Fund, which is a GUTPA Government Unit Protection Act authorized depository, and it is, in layman's terms, a nice savings account vehicle for the district to get a higher yield than the checking account. And we transfer money in there. We manage the funds very aggressively.
Is that, is that a private company, though?
It's managed by a private company, and it's insured under a GUTPA, which authorizes the district to deposit money there. And we have for decades.
Okay.
Anyone else have a question? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Chirrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, but no on C.
So noted. Mrs. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, organizational items A through D has passed.
Okay, thank you, and we will move on to the Board President's report. I have... I have two things. The first one is the survey that's been going around. I've been asked a number of times if this is an official board survey. I've, I've seen the survey, I don't know where the survey comes from, I don't know who started the survey. It is not an official board survey. The board did an official survey last April, I think it was under Dr. Alvik, that you handled the survey. This was done after the defeat of the referendum in March. We received hundreds of responses to that survey. There were a lot of questions, I do not have the survey in front of me, so I, I can't even tell you. There were reasons why people did not support it. One of the reasons was they did not want to support just the middle school, they wanted a middle school and a high school together. So based on the survey responses that we got, and going back to the steering committee, the board or the administration recommended to the Board of Education a two-part question. Last year, we only had a one-part question, just for the middle school, because the middle school seems to be our priority. Even with the addition of the trailers at the middle school, the core facilities can't handle the students. The cafeteria, the gymnasium, the, the library, the hallways are crowded, and they just can't fit, you know, seven hundred, eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred students in that school. So the board decided that, maybe, the administration to the board decided that we would come up with a two-part question, that you could vote for the middle school because we absolutely need that middle school, or you can vote for the middle school and the addition of the high school. That was adopted by the Board of Education back in August. That was also supported by the New Jersey Department of, Department of Education back in September, October. That is the referendum that is going on in March twelfth. If for any reason we change the referendum, we would have to start all over again. We would have to have a, a new resolution, come to the Board of Education, they would have to adopt that, we would then have to send everything back to the, to the Department of Education and have them look at everything again, and then give us the approval so that we could get it on the agenda. That would mean another year, because I don't think at this point we would have a, a time to get it in September, and this way you're looking at opening something if it passes in twenty twenty-three. So we can't wait that long to do that. It's, like, we have been saying, we're gonna have a lot of presentations, we're gonna have answers to all these questions, but right now, the, the referendum has already been adopted by the Board of Education, and we can't change it at this point. So we have to go out and hopefully get the, the, the community to back us and support that referendum. So that's where we are with that. My second piece is that all of the board members have received a committee preference sheet. It takes like, at the most, five minutes to fill out, so if I could get it this evening, that would be nice. If not by tomorrow, would be good. And if you look at the, the list, we have added an educational advocacy committee, and that's because as of tonight, the Ad-Hoc Committee for Fair Funding is being disbanded. So it looks like it has run its course, and we're going to go in a different direction. So the Educational Advocacy Committee will be in charge of looking at funding, will be charged for looking at legal opportunities to sue the state, it will be looking at educational opportunities, because that's what we're here for, educating our students. There's always something going on in Trenton where, where there's new curriculum, as we heard today, and something new is coming down that we're not even aware of yet, and enterprise opportunities. So I, I think this is a different way. It's a board committee, it is not an ad hoc committee, so we will have a board chair, a vice chair, and we'll work the same way as the other committees that are done. So if, if you can possibly get this to me this evening, that would be great, if not by tomorrow. So that would conclude my board president's report, and Ms. Arminio?
May I just ask a question based on your report?
Sure.
How did that change come about? I, I did notice that there was a different committee, how, how was that change put on?
Well, last, last year, I was talking to the administration after the chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee decided to resign his position, that we needed to do something else. So I recommended that that put, be put on to the, to, add that on to the committee list, and the administration agreed that that was a, a different way to do it. Any other questions? Okay, other Board of Education business? Anyone wish to ask any questions, give any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Polari?
Thanks for the opportunity, I'll, I'll be very brief. First of all, I just want to thank the Monroe community, whether you support it or not, for giving us the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education. I can already tell you that sitting on this side versus that side is a different feeling, because you do know certain things that you don't know when you're sitting there, but hopefully, we'll do justice to, not hopefully, we will do justice to the trust that people put, put in us. The one thing that I do want to bring out is, I think whatever happened past year, in my opinion, is history. I think we need to move on from that, I don't think we need to go back and dwell on it more and more. I think the responsibility lies with the Board of Education and also with the community to come together, not just for the referendum, we have a lot of things that we need to accomplish in twenty nineteen. So I request everybody who's looking at the video and who is in attendance here to realize that, you know, we're one team and we need to work together. So I just want to bring that out, and also thank you very much for the trust we, you put in us, and we'll do everything we can to live up to your trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polari. Anyone else from the board? Ms. Arminio?
I'd just like to welcome all the new board members. Yes, it's a different place behind, behind the desk than it is in the public, but again, in the public interest and the interest of the students, I welcome all the new board members, and I also encourage the public to continue to come and to speak, and I, I for one, am very interested. I, I feel I don't represent myself here on the board, I represent the community that brought me here. So I have the most respect for the community members that participate, that email that come, and for those who actually speak up when, when it's not popular. So I appreciate everyone, I wish everyone a Happy New Year, and looking forward to working very hard this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. And in response to Mr. Polari, I've said over and over and over, it's very different when you're sitting on this side of the table, because you have so much more information and opportunities to get the information than you have when you're sitting in, in the public. We have a lot more information and opportunities to know why we're making the decisions that we're making. Sometimes we're allowed to tell the public, sometimes we're not allowed to tell the public. Some of it is confidential, some of it is personnel, and just sometimes you, you, we, we don't have the, that might look like we're not being transparent to the public, but we are always as transparent as possible. So Mr. Polari is right, you'll find out that there's gonna be a little, it'll get a little different every, every month. Mr. Chierella?
Yes, thank you. I want to congratulate and welcome Mr. Polari, Mrs. Siegel, and Mr. Tofano. I look forward to, to working with all of you, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a good time and do, and, and do good things. We might not always agree, but as long as we agree to do the right thing, whether it's, you know, it's, whether we're, I always say that the, we don't have anybody on this board who's saying we can't, we, we can't fund education, we don't want to fund education for our children. What we have are people that say, we need to buy books, but maybe we should buy these books instead of these books, and maybe we should go to this vendor instead of that vendor. Those are healthy discussions, those are healthy disagreements, and that's where we need to be. I will say, though, I want to just mention one thing, and I'm sorry, Mr. Ryback, but on this impact fee thing, the township passing a resolution, standing up for impact fees is meaningless, because it's symbolic, because it's at the state level that impact fees were deemed illegal. So what I would like to see the township do, if they really want to impact development and help us, is to not just make a resolution asking for impact fees, or saying that they support impact fees, but actually vote to stop development. We just had the mayor vote for nine hundred and twenty units in September. So that's the impact. Whether or not they're giving, the developers are giving us fees, we have the ability to weigh and vote on impact, and that's something that we're not doing as a town, and I don't, I don't think we're doing ourselves justice by sitting here and saying, hey, great job, the township is gonna get us impact fees, or they're going to have a resolution designating impact fees. That's a state rule, and it's illegal right now, and I'll tell you, we will get impact fees, but I'll tell you when? When we're all built out, when the stock market collapses again, when the, when, when real estate values are halved, then they're gonna say, let's have impact fees. When they, when it's run its course, that's when they're gonna come and give us the impact fees. Until then, we're not, we're not getting into any of that stuff. So we need to be mindful of that, I think we need to stick with the truth and stay in the light, and we need to fight for what we need. And we need more money, we need more funding from the state, we need to stop the development here in town, and we need people that are gonna stand up and, and do those things. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chierella. Anyone else from the, Mrs. Lang?
I would be remiss if I didn't speak on the fact that this past week, on New Year's Day, we got excellent news that the court in New Jersey has said that having park as the only means of graduation, of showing that you've met your requirements, is not constitutional. I think what's important for people to understand when it comes to park, and I, I asked Jill and Dr. Alvik to help me with this, was that the problem with park was, number one, it was a moneymaker for a big corporation. It was not actually helping our children. It wasn't giving the good immediate information that our teachers need, that we can get through other means. Dr. Alvik had, has worked with her teachers doing, and now my brain went dead. Math. Math. Map testing, which actually gives immediate feedback, so that we know what our kids are doing and where our teachers need to boost them up and, and can meet the needs. The problem with park being the only graduation requirement is, and we, we always, as a school board and as educators, we are very cognizant of the fact that we educate all children, not just the top ten percent of students, not just the kids who are going to college. We need to educate all students. And if you are really dedicated to becoming an auto mechanic, you're not gonna do as well on a park test, because it doesn't test what you need to know. It's an old saying, is if you ask a fish to run an obstacle course, he can't do it. We need to level the playing field. So I'm very excited that we're, that park will not be the only way for children to show that they have met their educational, I don't wanna say standards, or have, have learned what they need to know. I am thrilled that we're going to look at giving them multiple opportunities to do that. It does not take away the fact that, that we're gonna need some sort of testing. The ESSA has said that we need to have something that shows our children are moving forward every year, so we will continue to do that. But I think it's important that people understand, and where my passion, and I think I can speak for Jill, came from was that this, the park test itself was a bad test. It did not have the backing of educators, it did not do what it was intended to do. It was a moneymaker for a big corporation, and then we pigeonholed all of our students into having to pass the park test. And now we have an opportunity to really meet the needs of all of our students. Thank you. And Ken, thank you for that email, he sent me the text, he's like, did you see this? No.
Can I just clarify something?
Ms. DeMayo?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, everything Patty said is correct. What the courts found, to be very specific, is that using park as a graduation requirement violates the statute, and the statute specifically said, a graduation requirement test must be an eleventh grade basic skills test, and that's what, instead, they were using park, which is not a basic skills test. So the court found that it violate the statute for a graduation requirement.
Thank you, Jill. Anyone else?
If I may?
Well, Mr. Rutske, you know, I think we've all been a little remiss in not welcoming you back to the Board of Education as the Jamesburg rep, and I have that to say.
That's very kind of you, I just wanted to say, going into my third year now, as the Jamesburg representative on the Monroe Board, I just wanted to say, as much as I enjoy representing Jamesburg's interest, I also greatly appreciate everybody making me feel like one of the Monroe Board members, and I look forward to another great year.
And you had to go to a meeting last night, too, to get back here today.
I did, I did, it's also very official. I got sworn in twice.
Yes.
I'm happy to have you, and I love the beard, by the way.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good, keep it, keep it.
Anyone else? Okay, then at this time, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. I think I'd like to say that this is the shortest meeting we've had in years, and that is not necessarily a bad thing. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mrs. Lang? Mr. Polari? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting is adjourned.